Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, September 19th, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square and unlike most of our Wednesdays, we have a whole lot of people here and they're not mad at us, they're all very happy, which is a nice change. So, we invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have three presentations this morning. And the first one, well, they're, all three of them are wonderful, all in their own way, although the first one's a little bit bittersweet. We want to recognize District Attorney Walt Beglaw for his 30 years of service, it says here. I think that's gotta be shorter, I mean, longer than 30 years, isn't it?
Yeah, 1988.
Really? Wow. Okay. So, we're doing that and we have a few other things to do to honor Walt because Walt is not gonna be with us a whole lot longer. So, do we wanna go down? Do we wanna go down?
What are you saying?
No, not in that way, not in that way. In Marion County way. Alright, so Paige, do you wanna come up with us first and then we're gonna grab Dick and Allison to do that as well. And I've got all kinds of goodies here. And we have a microphone? Yay, okay. Okay, so you get to hold this and it's right here. And I'm gonna talk about it first and then I want you to talk about him second. So, I pulled Walt's bio off of the website here. And he started in the District Attorney's office, you said what, 1988, was Deputy District Attorney from 1990 to 1993, prosecuted complex felony cases from 1993 to 2000, Trial Team Manager from 2000 to 2004, and then has been our Marion County District Attorney from 2004 until now. Graduated from Ulamet University College of Law, before that went to Seattle University, got a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice, has done a whole lot of work with the Oregon District Attorneys Association, I know he's been very active at the Capitol, was a past President on the Legislative Committee, National District Attorneys Association, Marion County Bar Association, a past Vice President, Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, really active member of that and always so willing to share information and help the Council really understand those really fun issues like grand jury recordation and, you know, other things that, civil commitments and things that sound a little bit complicated, but Walt can make them really seem very simple. The Marion County Children and Families Commission, he's been on that for a very long time and has chaired the Family Preservation Action Team, been involved in the Adult Drug Court and Mental Health Drug Court and Domestic Violence Council for Marion County. Liberty House, has been a past Board Chair, and Allison's here, I'm sure elaborate on that, and past Co-Chair of the Multidisciplinary Child Abuse and Fatality Review Team, was involved in Fight Crime and Invest in Kids, Attorney General's Restitution Reform Task Force, Governor's Reentry Council Steering Committee, the State Bar, Citizen Police Academy, Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, served as a Commissioner on that, and the Oregon Parole Board Work Group. So, just a lot of things on his bio that he has done. And I just wanna say from my personal experience with Walt, that he has been someone of such integrity, I mean, he just, like, when you talk to Walt, you know you're getting the real deal, you know he's not shining you on, you know he's telling you what he feels, what he thinks. He is the most courteous and gentlemanly person, I think, I know. And I have just, it's just been such an honor to work with you, Walt, and I know when I've called on you to speak at breakfast and do things, you've always been willing to help and willing to serve, and just really appreciate the relationship we've had with you here in Marion County. So, is that, I'll turn it over to Paige and then we'll have Sam close it out and give the plaque, and then we'll add Dick and Allison as some things they wanted to do too.
Thank you. My name's Paige Clarkson, I have worked for Walt in some form or another as my supervisor for my entire career, which is over 20 years now at the DA's office, and so I'm gonna tell you about the real Walt. No, I'm not, he's worried, he's worried. What I'm gonna tell you is when, just recently, while I was sitting in Walt's office and we were having some discussion about something, and I turned to him, because when I started in the DA's office, Walt was the cool supervisor, he was like the cool guy, like, everybody wanted to work for Walt, and he was funny, just a dynamic guy, and always had the answers to everything. I was sitting in his office recently and we were talking about some difficult topic and I turned to him and I said, "Do you remember when you were cool? Do you remember that? Remember how they always, everybody said, 'Do you remember when you were cool?'" That was a while, that was a while ago, so it has been my privilege and my absolute pleasure to have worked for the cool supervisor for my entire career, and I can't, I can't say enough. I will tell you, Walt recently won the Distinguished Service Award from ODAI, which is a really prestigious award, and he was not there to receive it, because Walt hates this stuff. He hates being recognized for any of this, he thinks it's silly and he thinks he is undeserving of it, and he is the most humble, most kind person that you could possibly work for, and the fact that he hates all of this is exactly why he's so deserving of it. I barely need a microphone, it's kinda ridiculous. But it's exactly why, but the fact that he hates all of this is exactly why he's so deserving of it. And so, with that, I think on behalf of our entire office, I just wanna thank Walt for being such an amazing mentor, such an amazing leader, and exactly the kind of District Attorney that we want in our community, and I consider it just a privilege to stand here, and, you know, I'm not only losing a mentor in my District Attorney, I'm losing someone that I consider to be one of my very best friends in life and in my profession, and that's gonna be felt in this county. So, I just am so grateful to you, Walt, and he's so deserving of this honor and so deserving to go off in retirement and never hear from us again. So, congratulations.
Sheriff, did you wanna come up? I just noticed you were, that Sheriff and Walt had worked together like this for many years.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Walt, it's been an absolute privilege to work side by side with you. I feel like we're Batman and Robin, we're not gonna be complete, our work in the Capitol, our work in the community, your commitment, integrity, and your dedication and humility really speak volumes. So, thank you so much for your partnership, it's been a privilege to work with you, and I am so excited for your next chapter in life. You will be missed, but I know that you've developed a fabulous team that will carry on the work of this community, so thank you.
Sam, close up this segment here.
This is dangerous, like Paige said, Walt didn't wanna have anything, so we had to force this this morning, make sure something happened, can't let 30 years go by. Just a couple random thoughts, one, it's troubling me a little bit, Walt, since you graduated in 89 yet you're a District Attorney in 88, so somebody thought, well, he'd make a good one.
There is a story of all.
Yeah, I know, there was some problem. I didn't graduate.
Yeah, I realized I skipped over that.
I told you, you're not gonna happen.
No, no, I was like, I needed an idea.
It's gonna happen. First of all, observations, when Dale Penn retired, oh gosh, I'm gonna miss him, he did such a great job and fun to be with, comes in and just the same, skip a lick, a little access better, but I just so enjoy it, I've definitely known Walt on a personal basis to opportunity take a fishing on the select, so I like to fish and I recognize that kind of spirit in Walt, he lost a dice when it, I almost had to call my animals, he turned white, that's my kinda guy, he cares.
Seems you hit me on the back.
Okay, I wanna read this too.
Walt, why don't you read it?
Well, come up here and stand here, turn red while I read this. Red, red in between this. Wonderful. Alright, so Walt Beglaw, District Attorney, appreciation for your unwavering integrity, impeccable professionalism, outstanding advocacy and upholding justice and improving the quality of life for the residents of Marion County, May 19, 1988, September 20, 2018. So, I'm gonna do this, and I'm sure appreciate it.
It's good, we're gonna get a picture.
Oh, did I? Okay.
John, you wanna come down and get a picture?
My dead microphone?
We have two dead microphones.
My other favorite thing are photo ops. My career, thanks, and you have to smile.
How do you feel about Facebook? One more.
She's gonna try and get some more. Yeah, why don't we have Dick?
So, let's do it this way then. So, yeah, have Dick come up, Dick, you have your, okay, I'll stay here. Alright, so we have to talk with the microphone because if we don't, it doesn't get picked up on TV.
Yeah, I don't wanna do that.
So, you wanna just get close to that one, okay?
Well, thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to say briefly about Walt, I'm trying to get together with him in the last, maybe a couple of months, but I assumed 12:31 would be the last day, but no, now here's 9:30, so, but, first of all, thank you Commissioners for serving, I really believe that this form of government is really on a ground level, a level that has the Commissioners to be in our community. I met Walt, methamphetamine was a big deal in 2005, and Dale Penn was the District Attorney, and so Anna Peterson and I, the former Mayor of Salem, we had this initiative of, the crime was really high in Marion County with the methamphetamine. Matter of fact, we called a meeting at the Franklin Building to get some initiative going on that, and Dale Penn was there, and then the next week, I think he went to become, it's interesting that a judge goes from the lottery commission to being a judge, it seems strange to me that he would do that, but, and then Walt came on board. And at that time that we were, the business community was law and order, we were having about 10, 12, 13 cars stolen a day in our community, and so we encouraged the District Attorney and the Sheriff and the City Police Officers to get into the methamphetamine. While the unintended consequence by doing that was these kids, and this is what the angle I wanna go at with Walt Beglaw, he was really sensitive to what were we gonna do for this unintended consequence of these kids that were coming out of these meth homes. And since that time, since 2005, he's been involved in the Family Preservation Action Team, which meant that the only District Attorney in the whole state, the only District Attorney in the whole state that was involved in that type of initiative, and I really appreciate that. I wanted to say, 16 years ago, a plaque was given to me when I sold my business to my son, and I thought it was really appropriate to give this to you, and I'll read it in a second, but I've had it made up for about two months ago, and I called Tammy yesterday this morning, and I said, "Hey, what did I do about this, Beglaw? He's leaving," and I got a real encouraging note from him yesterday, and, "What's going on?" He said, "Well, she says, 'By coincidence, the County Commissioners are doing something this morning.'" I said, "Great, I think I got just the thing ready, I ran into the store and got this," and this is what I wanna give you, Walt, this is. I also gave this to a 90-year-old gentleman named Jared Frank too. Yeah, it's good, but this was given to me 16 years ago, so, yeah, this plaque says, "Have you had so many victories, successes, and accomplishments that you're tired, you decided to back off? Do you look at the trophies, the awards, and the prizes of yesterday and lean on those laurels?" And we heard about that in his bio. Final paragraph says, "No, God is not through Walt Beglaw yet."
So, Allison, would you come up? And before I hand the microphone to you, Walt said he didn't want a present when he left, instead he wanted to give a donation to Liberty House. So, we have collected, and I don't know, this is like counting and continuing to add to it, so we didn't actually put an amount on the certificate, we have it on a sticky note, but we, I think Lisa, 285 is in this envelope. So, $285 to Liberty House, collected by the employees, and Walt, here's a certificate from us to you, saying that we've done this donation in your honor. So, Allison?
That is the most amazing gift, so I can't think of anything greater to honor Walt. And thank you, having been a member of the Marion County family, it's pretty special, so thank you. I'd love to read something that I wrote in honor of Walt earlier this year, if I may, it was for the Marion County Bar Association. I didn't actually know that you hated this kinda stuff as much as you do, so I'm probably risking our relationship a little bit, I can go get you a fish or something to make it better, but, anyway. Walt Beglaw has provided an exceptional level of inspirational leadership throughout his career. Three qualities shine above all of his, above all of his strengths, integrity, intelligence, and compassion. I was asked to describe even three words. Walt personifies integrity. Throughout the 10 years I've known Walt and worked with him on many projects supporting children and families, I've been deeply impressed with his integrity, his ethics, moral clarity, sincerity, and trustworthiness. Consistently, Walt has provided a moral compass for our community that has strengthened our collective resolve to support those in need, seek justice for those who have been wronged, and hold accountable those who have wronged others. Walt's one of the most intelligent individuals I've ever worked with, he possesses the rare skill honed over many years of being able to explain highly complex concepts succinctly and understandably. His razor-sharp analytical prowess has brought clarity to any number of community-wide challenges, helping to set the stage for collaborative solutions. Finally, Walt is one of the most compassionate individuals I've ever met. He understands the pain of the human condition, but is not overwhelmed by it. Through compassion, he sees the potential of individuals to turn their lives around, and his compassion has created many pathways to hope for countless individuals. The fourth and fifth words out of three that I would use to describe Walt would be calm and consistent. I think those concepts speak for themselves. And the reason I wanted to share that is that not only are you those things, but you set such an example for all of us who want to try to be good leaders and good people in our daily lives. So, what we can commit to you is that with your example, we will continue to carry on that vision for this county and particularly for the children. Thank you so much.
Sure.
So, it's on, you can hear me. Thank you so much. Again, I don't relish this kind of, and it probably shows really, it's all palpable, you can probably see me squirming, but I have, I'm using this as, holding up here too. I have had a blessed career here, and I think it's because I've been so fortunate to live and work amongst great human beings, good compassionate people that cared, that worked hard, that brought vision, that every day, and so, part of that career is having a job with so much responsibility, and I've been really in tune with that, very close, and when you have such authority in a position like the District Attorney, you have to be kind and careful and thoughtful, but also carry yourself where you get the job done. And so, I've never taken that for granted, and it's really important for our community that that does not happen, and so, I'm really proud of that, and I've never felt entitled to anything, ever. So, I kinda leave with a moment of not, of just graciously letting Paige and her amazing staff that we have, our amazing staff as a county, kinda take and go forward with the mission of our community and keeping folks safe. So, I also just wanna thank the Commissioners, Sam and Janet and Kevin, John, Jan Fritz, I know she's out, amazing vision, amazing stewards of what we have to accomplish, and what a great thing that you have done in your tenure, I've walked a lot, my career is parallel them, and what a blessing that is as well. So, going forward, things are great, things are positive, be positive. This is a great community, it's a great state, and it's a great nation, and we're doing great things, so we can accomplish a lot, and I think we have the right team to do that. So, thank you for all those kind words today, and thank you, I'm so excited about the Liberty House piece, I love, just, that's where the energy needs to go, because that's what we do. So, thank you very much, and I'm still here for 10 days or so, and then I've got Dick's message to me, it's memorialized now, so we'll see what comes next, but right now, I'll just take a little breather and see what the next plan is, so thank you.
Alright, so, I had this little idea a while back about, we had this big water crisis, and what I heard was so many people were involved in making a difference in that. I said, "So, what if we honored these peoples at a board session or something?" And they were like, "Oh yeah, that would be good." Sent John an email, and I'm like, "Where is it? Where is it? Where is it? It's been a long time." And what we found out, where's that? I need the cold folder. So, we got a room full of people, and, no, it wasn't designed just to be part of Walt's party, so he had an audience, but it just worked out that way. So, these are certificates for all the people who are here, and these are the certificates we signed for all the people who couldn't make it. So, I mean, just visually, there are just a ton of people. How many certificates do we have, Kristy? Do you remember altogether? It's a lot, anyway. Okay, so, before we hand out the certificates, where's my cheat sheet on the talking points? Oh, right behind you. So, this Salem Water Advisory, county participated between May 29th and June 19th of this year. There were 84 employees from nine county departments, many employees were away from their regular duties for two weeks or more. In addition to employees, there were more than 160 volunteers who helped staff with water distribution stations or delivered water. And just to kinda go through what the different departments did, so Emergency Management established the Emergency Operations Center, coordinated with Salem and others, Military Department on water distribution sites, smaller cities, that were served by water from the North Saniam River in Detroit Lake, connected with community organizations to secure water deliveries to homebound customers, and worked with Health and Human Services to staff a call center at the Emergency Operations Center, fielding questions from the public about home care and for food service providers as well. And Jolene made the point that we have like this small city over in East Salem, and so when Salem was looking at their water crisis, they were just looking within the Salem city boundaries, and, you know, we had to say, "Hey, wait a minute, I mean, there's people over in the east side that are on Salem water, and they need exactly the same kind of attention that the people within the Salem boundaries need." And so, our folks just jumped right in and helped with that, but we also helped with so many other things on a broader level. Health and Human Services helped staff the call center at the Emergency Operations Center, they triaged calls for water deliveries, inspected the water distribution tanks, provided technical assistance to medical facilities, and to restaurants and other food service providers. I mean, you know, I'm sure there were just lots and lots of questions about bottled water, is water okay, what can we do? I know, having gone to restaurants, some of them kinda made their own, you know, you have your choice, you can drink the water if you feel like, you know, you're not in that particular vulnerable population, or, you know, and others chose to just be, to serve bottled water and cook with bottled water, so that was interesting. Public information, so this was hugely important, the communication out to the public, and our staff was at the Emergency Operations Center throughout the event, and so Jolene was there and other people that were involved with communications. We were also staffing at the Salem's Joint Information Center, we created an e-newsletter distribution list of all the environmental health licensed facilities to distribute information timely to restaurants and food service providers, other information submitted through this community e-newsletter, and fielded calls from local media and national media, included press releases, so a lot of work going on to make sure that communication was constantly going out. And then the water distribution itself, to people that couldn't get their own bottled water and really needed our help. So, we had staff and volunteers working with cities and the Military Department to set up these distribution stations for residents in the unincorporated areas, in State and Turner, Food Share and Home Care Organizations to deliver water to homebound customers. We also had the CERT members, Marion County Community Emergency Response Team, members and volunteers, and they helped staff the stations. And then Information Technology was also involved, supporting water distribution efforts by doing GIS mapping of the sites for publication on the website. So, really a team effort by Marion County, lots and lots of people involved, lots of time, but it was a serious issue, and just proud of the way that we jumped in and helped and were supportive where we needed to be supportive and took the lead where we needed to take the lead, and I just think it's just a hugely wonderful example of the quality of staff that we have here at Marion County that can do that work and do it so well. So, do you wanna add anything?
Oh, just a little bit, just to acknowledge that we received thanks from the City of Salem, recognizing the work that Marion County did to assist them too, not just our old, unincorporated residents, and I guess my prayer would be that this is a one-time event, I hope we never have to do this again.
So, you've got the certificates, we're gonna do these by department, and I think Jolene's gonna take some pictures by department, but how are you gonna do the first one, since you're in it? Do you have somebody? No, no, so hand your camera off to somebody. Yeah, Sheriff will take a great picture. Okay, so from Board of Commissioners office, we have Jolene Kelly and Lisa Trauerneck, would you come up? Let's give them a hand. So, I'm gonna read names, because we had RSVPs, but some people, it says tentative, and then I'm not sure if some people showed up that didn't RSVP, so I'll just ask that question when we get done with each department. So, under Business Services, we have Kenny Conway, so would you come up as I read your name? Ed Eng, Tracy Fisk, Thomas Keck, Lisa Miller, I know you're here, Larry Rutter. Is there anyone else from Business Services that I did not name that's here? Is everybody? Great. Alright. So, Jolene is back in the camera. You're kinda friendly there. Right? Alright. There you go. Ready? One, two. Next department is Health and Human Services, and we have Diana Dickey, Mark Lou... So Jolene is back in the camera.
You're kind of friendly there.
All right. Next department is Health and Human Services. And we have Diana Dickey, Mark Ludo, did I say that right? Tim Mead, Cody Rosen, Trader, John Schmedel, Carol Sholen, Carrie Tinni, and Bonnie Yanariello. I probably butchered all these names, I'm sorry. You didn't RSVP, well, that is then probably the problem. Carrie, did you want to come up too? Did you find? Everybody have a certificate?
All but one, but I'm not sure if she just showed up.
Who is that? All right. So you guys are definitely going to have to. Do you want us to scoot down? Do you want us in two rows?
I think two rows might work.
Okay, so short people in front. Carrie, you get in front. You're shorter. Carrie, Carrie. There you go, all right. Wait just one more, right over here. No, over here, over here. Yeah, get by Carrie. And I'm sitting right here. Is everybody ready?
I'm Jolene Kelly. I asked to say one quick thing and I want to give a really special thanks to Carol and Bonnie who worked the call center endlessly. And not only taking calls from the public who needed water or restaurants that needed help. There was one day that my phone rang nonstop and I was trying to put out a press release and just couldn't finish it because I couldn't stop answering the phone. And so I handed them my phone and I said, if it's a commissioner or the CIO, I'll take the call, but otherwise let them know, I'll call them back. And they had my phone for about two hours so that I could get some other things done and I so appreciate that help.
Okay. Well, let's do Finance next. So we have one person from Finance, Carla Corbett. Are you here? Congratulations. We'll make two rows. No, just kidding. And then another small but mighty group is IT. So we have Pat Berger and Bernie Pearson. All right, now always the difficult department, Public Works. Only because the RSVPs kept changing, I guess, over time. So, well, I'm going to read these and I'll hope that we have everybody and if I haven't named somebody. All right, so Eric Anderson, right, there you go. Lane Andrews, yay. Krista Carter, I saw you here. There you are. Ed Flick, I saw you here. How about Scott Grossman?
No.
No, okay. Amber Kirby?
No.
No. Amanda Rhodes? Amanda's here. You have Amanda? Well, it might be in the other thing, you see, these are the ones that. Flick works, can you see Amanda? Amanda Rhodes we're looking for. Okay, here's, here's, here's Eric Anderson, right here. And look for Rhodes here. Oh, you do? Okay, great. Excellent. Let's go to Kim Rhodes. You find that one?
Yes.
Hand me the ones that you're skipping over to. Is Kim Rhodes there? Oh, he's done it. He does? Okay, great. Thank you. Brandon Schaefer? There you are. Trevor Choup? Chau? Chou? I taught French, it's chou. Just kidding. Tim Singh? There he is. Jose Uranda? And Stephanie Watson. So who else did we?
Brent.
Brent? Garrison. Brett Garrison? Where's Brent? Your Brent? Great, all right. Anyone else? From Public Works? Okay. Yeah, you need to go up front. You go up front too. And then you guys scoot down this way. So Ed's, I want you, I want Ed to end up being right about here. Let the guys through. All right. There we are. All right, everybody ready? Excellent.
First of all, Commissioners, thank you for recognizing the work of the team. I was humbled by the way that the county came together behind this incident with very short notice. In particular, the partnership we have now between Emergency Management and Health and Human Services is phenomenal. We couldn't have been successful if we had not practiced that in exercises last year. But this illustrates, I think, two, two important things. One is the citizens really depended on this, this effort. There were people who didn't have the ability to drive to Wilsonville to get water. And I think that because of the work of the folks you recognize today, we didn't leave anybody out. And, and the second thing is, we, we can't put a team like this together at the last minute. You know, we learned in this event how important our actions are from the very beginning. And so I appreciate the way that we have been building towards a real legitimate capability to do this kind of work. We don't know what will happen next. I got a text from MetCom, there was a hazmat incident, small. But any one of those things could be the on-ramp to the next thing. And so what the Emergency Management Team wants to do with the whole county is have a capability that's relevant, reliable, and responsive. So thanks for your support.
All right. So next is our United Way presentation. For, if you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. If you want to take like a two-minute break, we'll let you get back to whatever important county work you're doing. Thank you all for being here this morning, really appreciate it. I moved your nameplate so we wouldn't knock it down.
Thank you.
Can't reach it, my arm's not long enough, sorry. All right. Well, that was a lot of fun. So moving right along, and David, we'll do yours right after this, okay? We have our United Way Employee Contribution Campaign kickoff, so we have Lisa Miller and Stephanie Bob from, from United Way, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Lisa Miller, Business Services, Volunteer Services Coordinator. I'm here this morning to help kick off our annual United Way Employee Contribution Campaign. And this morning, we have Stephanie Bob, who is the Resource Development Coordinator with United Way. She's going to give us a little information about why this is such an important campaign and where our dollars are going for these donations.
So, good morning, thank you for having me. My name is Stephanie Bob and I work for United Way of the Mid Bowlout Valley. So one of the things we worked, I wanted to really hone in on is where the dollars have gone that have been contributed so far. And so we were founded in 1937. We service Marion, Polk, and Yam Hill Counties. I don't, Yam Hill County has been a recent, in the last five years. We're independent 501(c)(3). We now have 10 professional staff onboard that helps bring your dollars back into your community in various different positions. Liz was here earlier with me, she's Development Director, and she had to scoot out to meet with Salem Kaiser School District for a program that I'm going to speak about in just a minute. So one of the things that we have evolved in with United Way is we've, we're now, one of our Board of Directors brought adaptive philanthropy to our attention. And what that really means is that we, we adapt to what our community needs. And you're going to see in the slides that I'm going to show you, we're going to talk about, is how United Way has, has really evolved in the last couple of years. And now we really seek out what the needs are in our community and then we put the dollars to action, which is a different philosophy but has really made some strides forward. So the dollars that are raised here, stay here. So the number that you're looking at is $1,209,063. Where does that money go? Taylor's House was an initiative that was started by Raul Marquez, who was a McKay High School student and is on the Board of Directors for United Way. He single-handedly spearheaded the raising of $412,012. And we just exchanged keys on this home, it's going to be a 10-bed youth shelter for 11- to 17-year-olds. And the mayor of Salem spoke when we exchanged keys with Hope. And they, they estimate there's approximately 1,000 homeless students in Marion County. We can only house 10 in this location. And with the help of your dollars, we are forging forward and hopefully building more shelters just like this one. The other initiative that we're working on is United for Classrooms. 145,500 of that went back into the classrooms in Marion, Polk, and Yam Hill Counties. We gave essentially $200 per classroom at the grade school level to help offset poverty, school supplies, education. We discovered through some information that we received, about $600 comes out of each elementary school teacher's pockets to go back into their classrooms. So we're trying to combat that just a little bit. And what we found is these teachers use those dollars to buy a science curriculum, books, mats for the kindergarten, things that, that really affected the children's abilities to learn. But they were also purchasing snacks and shoes or sweats and leggings for kindergarten and first graders if they had had accidents, they had something to change into. We also gave back $147,000 in Grant Maker's course at Willamette University that Ron Hayes has been instructing in now. Andrew, who's in our office, is now the professor. We have $177,000 in Community Impact Grants such as Liberty House that was here, Family Building Blocks, Boys and Girls Club, and CASA are just a few that we've just given grants to. United Way, you have the opportunity to designate your dollars to go back into the community. And we have given out $156,000 that was given directly to United Way but designated to go to other nonprofits in this area. And $13,000 in Urgent Needs. And Urgent Needs doesn't have a definition, it just has a cause. So when we're contacted for someone who needs help with a light bill or rent, there was a lady who lives up in the canyon, who's 85 years old, lives alone on a property and her water pump went out. She went two weeks without water. And we got a call from the SIT team, long story short, we helped her get that water pump up and going, so she had water, clean water to drink, which is interesting since that's what you were talking about earlier today. And then we do have a transportation bus pass that we work directly with chariots. And we allow those bus passes to be given to other nonprofit organizations. And people can actually call us and just ask for the transportation pass so they can get to them from doctor's appointments, those type of things. And then we have a program called Good 360, which we partner with organizations such as Do It Best, Lowe's, Home Depot, Walmart, the Disney Store. Those products are directly donated to us, then we give them back to our nonprofit partners. And it can be anywhere from the paint that's on the wall at Taylor's House to shower curtain and towels for a mom who is trying to get her back on her feet after leaving a domestic violence situation. So our goals this year is to directly work towards childhood poverty, the homelessness issue that's in Marion County and Polk and Yam Hill, capacity building for nonprofit communities, and stepping up for emergent needs. Meaning that when there's an emergent need, knowing that we are a resource for those. We obviously can't do large things, but if it's, if it's an emergent situation, we want those brought to our attention so that we can help out. We're currently working on United for Classrooms, which I talked, talked about, the teen shelter, which I also talked about, but the mobile shower unit I didn't discuss. And I want to touch base on that because it's, it's an initiative that Claire Adams, who is a senior at South Stand High School and is also a voting member on our Board of Directors, that's something that she finds very passionate. And she is spearheading this, the United Way Board of Directors has given her $50,000 to get this program up, up and going. And it's going to be an actual shower unit that will be towed, that will go to the homeless communities and give our homeless folks access to hygiene. They'll be able to sign up, go in, shower. And we're currently doing underwear and sock drives to help them at least change their undergarments. We haven't quite figured out how we're going to help them with the clothing smell an issue, but at least undergarments is something that we're, we're going to help with as well. And that shower unit is going to be pretty darn slick. And we'll go up into the canyon, we'll go out to Willamina and help all services in those areas as well. So I don't really need to go through all of the slides as far as what $10 buys, what $15 buys. But I do want to touch on the fact that Marion County has been a great partner for United Way. But I do want to touch on the fact that Marion County has been a great partner for United Way and could be a better partner with regards to folks understanding and getting the knowledge and the information as to what we're doing. And so, we're working very closely with Lisa. There'll be some emails that come out that highlight some of these things, that folks can hopefully have access to more information. So, I don't want to go on and on. I just wanted to make sure that you kind of got a feel for what's going on at the United Way. We're doing some great things. I'm super excited about what's coming. Do you have any questions for me?
Do you have questions?
Well, thank you for being here. But probably for Lisa, talk about our Marion County program in particular. Who's doing it? Leadership, goals, anything that comes off the top of your head?
So, this year, we just started yesterday. We have several departments that have already stepped up with some really great creative ideas to get the information out and to start bringing in some donations. Our Public Works Department, they are having a bingo game starting up next week. They are having a lattes and breakfast on one of the mornings. Here in Courthouse Square, we're going to have a couple of fundraisers. We're going to have our breakfast fundraiser. And then, also, I believe Finance is putting together a pizza luncheon to bring in some donations. So, really, our goal this year is to increase participation and really get the information out there of all the great things that United Way is doing. Our goal is definitely to bring in more than last year. But, last year, our campaign was really short and really just quick, down and dirty before the end of the year. So, this year, we started a little earlier, so we can have more time to really dive in and learn more about United Way.
Well, I hope so, because it is important. And we got a little presentation of just the good things it does in staying locally. In the past, they've helped. I don't know if the program necessarily reaches goals, but with youth reading, they picked that up. And it's really important to me, and I hope it made a difference.
Yeah. So, hopefully, this year, we'll, with the different campaigns that United Way has, we're going to try to get that information out in an easier way and really focus on the, you know, the individual stories and the things that they're doing.
And Kristy wants to organize something in the Board's Office. Will you follow up on that?
Absolutely. Yeah. I will give her a call. Yeah. We'll set something up.
Thank you, Kristy. Yeah. So, we've been really actively involved in the United Way. I think, for the first few years that I was here, it had kind of dropped off. And then, we made kind of a huge change between years. And part of, I think, the, there were several things that we did to improve participation. One was that we not only got information out about where the money went, but we got information about where the money doesn't go, because there are still these old rumors that are hanging over about controversial organizations that some people like and some people hate, and they don't want their money going there. And I think there's also some misnomers about how much goes to administration. And so, to get the information out about, you know, the fact that the new and improved United Way, it's much higher rates that go actually to the services. And then, I think this kind of, what would you say, evolution that you've been doing the last couple of years, that information definitely needs to get out, because I think people really support things like Taylor's House and getting dollars into schools and that kind of thing. And I think that that will help some people feel like their dollar is being well-spent when they give it to United Way. So... Yeah. I guess the last thing I would say is if there's a way that we could get just some information about targets, so kind of where was a department last year? People can be real competitive, you know? So, just even, I mean, I don't, certainly, we don't want to make people feel like they're required to give to United Way because it is a voluntary thing. At the same thing, it doesn't hurt to kind of say, "All right, you know, as a department, we made this much this year. Let's see if we can, you know, get in the same ballpark or even beat that." So...
We have information available about how much the administration cost is. And I can get that information over to Lisa. But we have her around 15% for overhead administration costs, which is super low in comparative to other nonprofits. And we have some things that we're working on to get that even lower.
All right. Anything else? We need the lights back on, Kristy, if we could. Feeling like it's pretty dark up here. So, thank you all for being here. And Lisa, one other thing, maybe you could just mention really quickly, like, there are some big events, right, that are going on? Have you already, did you already go through those, or?
I did. I didn't actually specify the dates, but...
So, are there anything coming up in the next couple of weeks, I guess, would be the good, so that if people are listening?
Specifically, out of Public Works, they're having their bingo starting next week, next Monday. But, the real fundraisers that are happening on the calendar so far aren't until October, the last week.
Yeah. I just wrote down, there's like breakfast here at Courthouse Square.
Yeah. The breakfast will be on the 16th.
Perfect Potluck, I guess, is the app that we can go on and...
And then, our pizza lunch here in Courthouse Square, that'll be the last day of the United Way campaign, so that'll be the big wrap-up. But we're still working on more activities and raffle prizes that we're collecting. So, more information will come out soon.
And payroll deduction makes it really, really easy.
Yes. And this year, we have an actual PDF form that can be filled out online and then just printed out and submitted. So, we're trying to cut down on the extra forms that might be distributed and not used. And so...
Good idea. Very good.
That is our hope that it will be a lot easier for people to donate.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Well, thank you both. Thank you, Lisa, for coordinating this for the county. And thank you, Stephanie, for being here. Really appreciate the information. All right. Well, let's go back to public comment. And David Beam, you have been very patient. Would you like to come up to this table over here and give us your thoughts today? David, over here would be better, okay? They can see you better on the camera. Good morning.
My name's David Beam. I'm an advocate for special-needs populations to Salem area. I am, I am going to be appointed under the Governor one more term in the Governor's Office for disabilities for all the services in the state of Oregon. My question is for the county commissioners, give mental health more money for Saturday service for Salem area. Because a lot of disability people do go to the dances, and some of them have to walk so many miles, go to the dances. So, I'm asking that the county commissioners will fund more, $30 million more for Saturday and Sunday services for Salem area. Because that's supposed to be started next year. So, I'm asking that the county commissioners approve it, give it for the bus system better. Because a lot of disability people can't get out, or mentally ill can't go to services for the hospital. And I was wondering if we can look at that problem, soon if possible.
Well, thank you, David. That's a really good thing to advocate for. I think that the dollars came out of an employee payroll tax that the legislature passed. And that's actually not through the county. That's through the transit people.
Right.
So, we are supportive of that.
I testified for that, and I got it passed. So, I, I'm asking the county, would you, commissioners, would you help me in to get it done for the next legislature?
Right. Well, we will work with the transit authority, with chariots, to make sure that that happens.
Thank you. That's all I'm asking.
Certainly supportive.
Right. Thank you. Thanks for being here. And thank you for always bringing these important issues before us.
Thank you.
All right. Well, it's not that they don't care. We care. We're still here. All right. So, let's move on to our consent calendar. Consent agenda, I guess, I don't know why I call it a calendar. And Commissioner Brantano, it is not only your turn, you're the only one here to read it, so...
So, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve our consent calendar, as I like to call it. Under Finance, approve a quitclaim deed to convey real property tax ID R61779 located at 3023 Brown Road Northeast in Salem to Justin Stevens and Jesus Green, Alcanter. Health, approve Amendment Number 1 to the contract for services with Constance Henderson LLC to extend the term until September 25, 2019, and increase the hourly rate from $85 to $90 per hour, and increase the hours from 20 to 27 hours per week. The contract for services will be $162,000 and expires on September 25, 2019. And approve Amendment Number 3 to intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health and Sciences University to add $10,000 for the Oregon Center for Children and Youth with Special Needs. The new amount will be $202,750 and expire on September 30, 2018. In Public Works, receive notice of hearings officer's decision denying conditional use case 18030 Lee, Clerk's File 5780. Approve a request for reconveyance and indemnity and appointment of successor trustee of trust deed. In the tax office, approve a tax refund in the amount of $20,000, the Oregon Department of Revenue deferral unit. And approve a property tax refund in the amount of $17,920.24 to Lowe's HIW Incorporated.
All right. I will second your motion. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. All those items are approved. So, now, we have three items under Health for action and one under Public Works. So, we'll start out with item number one, consider approval of a proclamation declaring the month of September 2018 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Marion County. And Scott Richards and Carrie Muller are here to talk about this very, very important issue.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Carrie Muller. I'm the Administrator for Marion County Health and Human Services. And with me...
Scott Richards, Division Director with Marion County Health and Human Services.
So, I just wanted to frame the request this morning to approve the proclamation. It's been a great experience this morning to be here and celebrate with you all the incredible contributions of our collaborations in this community, and specifically in the county. This topic on the proclamation, I wanted to recognize Walt here, too. Walt helped us think through some of the events that we've had to date with regards to suicide. The one word I would say that I would add to the descriptions for Walt is compelling. He is one of the most compelling individuals I have ever met, and he does that in the spirit of that gentle, respectful collaboration. I'm going to miss him, but I did want to recognize his great work. And it's the same theme with regard to the emergency management team. All of this is really about prevention. So, when we try to step back a bit and figure out what we can do in this community, both at a population level and an individual level, to help the citizens of Marion County be healthy and live the lives that they want to live, it really, I think, frames the, all of our items today on the action, but specifically around the request for the proclamation. So, I'm going to turn it over to Scott.
In 2016, 771 Oregonians died by suicide. It's the second-leading cause of death for Oregonians that are adolescents and young adults. And the rate of adolescent suicide has steadily been increasing since 2010. In Marion County, nearly 1 in 10 11th graders report attempting suicide. I think on the heels of seeing some rather disturbing numbers at the beginning of this year related to youth suicide, the Health Department on May 9 hosted a Zero Suicide Forum. And participants were widespread. We had agency representatives from Bridgeway Recovery, from Northwest Human Services, Youth ERA, Recovery Outreach Community Center, Trillium Family Services, and Liberty House. And I'm sure I'm not capturing them all. It was really a diverse group. But others who participated included the District Court, some representatives, the District Attorney, Oregon Health Authority, school districts, and Salem Health, and family members, and mental health and prevention staff from Marion and Polk Counties. I think the purpose of this forum was not only to bring everyone together, to focus on this cause that has such a high impact on our community, but it was also a call to action. And the participants in the forum identified five priorities that included creating an anti-stigma and community-wide education campaign, build a community culture to collaborate within and outside of healthcare, to develop and maintain a map and master list of resources throughout the community, to advocate for more flexible funding resources, and to ensure more consistent resources for post-vention and survivor groups. Certainly, that was an area that I think stood out, that is not something that, as a community, we focused on significantly. And there's certainly room for much improvement. So, as, next steps to that effort, the Health and Human Services applied to a Zero Suicide Academy. Zero Suicide is a national initiative, and there's a training, I think, to help communities and groups move forward with their community efforts. And in fact, our application was successful. We weren't the only ones from Marion County to apply. Salem Health also sent a team, and those two teams are participating in that today. So, it just so happens that our group is there right now. One of the imperatives of the Health Department's strategic plan is to drive systemic change to support healthy communities. One of the initiatives identified in driving that systemic change was to partner in the community to address a key community health issue. And it was, just became crystal clear that this is the first initiative that we want to focus on as part of our strategic plan. Other events this month that have highlighted and promoted awareness around suicide includes a shrink wrap of Sheriff's Department car that will be, I think, that way for, throughout the month at least. And then, there's been an article by Dick Hughes highlighting our efforts and focus on suicide awareness. So, in support of our efforts to promote community-wide education addressing this critical community health issue, we ask that you consider approval of a proclamation declaring the month of September 2018 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Marion County.
I just would like to add, the Health Advisory Board is urging your consideration of this today. It was a topic at our last Health Advisory Board, and they were encouraging us to come, requesting the proclamation.
Thank you. Comments?
Well, I'm struggling with, I don't like to make things personal, but I, maybe like a lot of people, have been touched with close relatives and suicide. And I was hoping, Scott, that I hear something about reaching out, but then, as I'm, you know, that they know there's a place that they can go and talk to and stuff. But I think of this particular case, he didn't even tell me. So, why, why would he? I don't know. But it's still, it's how it affects people. I still feel like, you know, gosh, give me a chance. Give us a chance. And I didn't even know.
Boy, Commissioner, I really join you in that sentiment. Most people actually don't come in for care or services. So, this effort, besides making sure our staff are as competent and confident as possible to deal with suicide, the effort on, to look out into the community is exactly that reason, because most people don't seek services. With the high visibility of this recent deaths in the nation, I think it's really driving home that issue that it's, that the message in there is it's okay not to be okay, but that it can get better. And so, it's really inviting the conversation. And so, there'll be several efforts, I think, in our community specifically, to help everybody in our community, not just the professionals, be as comfortable and confident as possible about having that conversation and then helping people get to the place that they need to get for services and supports. So, I really appreciate that. Most people don't seek services.
I think people feel they're at the bottom, so somewhere, we got to get the message that if you are, you can get out, and that there's hope.
Treatment works.
Madam Chair?
Yes, John.
I've had experience with this, because my daughter tried to commit suicide after being brutally raped. We took her to the county's Psychiatric Crisis Center. This was years ago. And it's amazing. We took her to the county's psychiatric crisis center, this was years ago, and it's amazing what they did for her. She's now a bright, active member of the Portland community, and is a nurse at OHSU. I was talking to the ED doc about this, is a doctor I know that's on the Salem Health Board. He said they get four or five suicides or suicidal ideation every day in the ED, so it's a huge problem, and one we need be concerned about.
And why, coming together as a community is really gonna, it'll take all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that, John.
So just several thoughts that I have. One is, and kind of tagging along with what John and Sam said, the importance of people understanding that there is help out there, and to kind of know where to turn. I think a lot of people probably aren't aware that we have a crisis line that they can call, or not aware that there are services available. And then the other part is that oftentimes, I think people feel like they're the only ones that are experiencing that. And that's what I loved about that Polk County movie, was that it showed that kids in all different sectors, you know, whether they were in different social groups or whatever, that each one of them had their own stressors, and they weren't alone, there were others that were experiencing similar things. So I think that getting that message out is really important. I had a very close friend who committed suicide, she worked for me, and just had a chance, her daughter was a senior in high school, just months from graduation, and her son, I think, was in the sixth grade at the time. And he just reached out to me less than a year ago and wanted to come in and talk, was trying to reconnect with all the people that had known his mother. I think it's such a final solution to problems which seem really deep at the time, but they're really temporary problems. And I, I think oftentimes, the impact that it has on the people who are left is just so profound, and that's not something that's often talked about either. I mean, certainly it's tragic when we read that people are gone, but it's also so tragic for the children that are left behind, for the spouses or the significant others that just wonder what they could have done, you know? What did they miss? What did they forget? How did, how did they let that happen? And there's, I think, a lot of guilt and a lot of sorrow that comes along with it. And so I just completely support what it is that you're trying to accomplish, and anything that we can do as a board to make that education better, bigger, stronger, faster, we want to be there for you, to help you.
Thank you.
Your guests for your support.
So we have a proclamation in front of us, and a couple fancy copies. Do both of them go to the Health Department, or do we keep one? Just one, okay.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we do approve a proclamation declaring the month of September two thousand and eighteen as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Marion County.
And I will second that motion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion's approved, and we will, as is our custom, read the proclamation.
Okay. "In the matter of proclaiming September two thousand and eighteen as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, the proclamation, whereas the health of Marion County residents is of the utmost importance to the well-being of Marion County as a whole, and whereas suicide is the eighth-leading cause of death overall in Oregon, and second-leading cause of death for Oregonians aged fifteen to thirty-four, and whereas in Marion County, men are two point nine times as likely to die by suicide as women, and the persons most at risk of suicide are white males over age fifty, and whereas in Marion County, the rate of suicide among veterans is higher than the Oregon State average, and ..."
Whereas in Marion County, ten point four percent of eighth graders and nine and a half percent of eleventh graders report attempting suicide. And whereas the stigma associated with mental health and suicide works against suicide prevention by discouraging individuals at risk for suicide from seeking life-saving help, and whereas statewide and community-wide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged, and whereas Marion County strives to support the health of all residents by promoting suicide prevention and by raising awareness of mental health supports that are available to end suicide in our community, now therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the month of September two thousand and eighteen as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Marion County." All right. Thank you. So, Jane, you wanna?
I'm gonna stand there.
Yeah. Give this one to Christie. All right, let's go to our second item under Health, and that is to consider approval of Amendment Number Three to the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network Mental Health Provider Service Agreement, modifying payment terms to monthly payments, adding twelve million seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars, and extending the term through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. And Carrie, your name's on this one, too?
Thank you. So just for committee members who may be listening, just a reminder, Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network contracts with Marion County Health and Human Services Department to provide mental health services for individuals who have Oregon Health Plan or Medicaid insurance. Our relationship with BCN is longstanding, and the services that the contract with the BCN provides are a full array of mental health services. We provide a lot of services in the department, this contract is specifically to mental health services. So the Health Department, Health and Human Services Department, is one of approximately about twenty providers in the community that provide mental health services and recovery supports. Our department specifically serves more than three thousand individuals a year in mental health services, both adults, youth, and families. And really, the focus of our services tends to be for individuals who have the most complex needs, so we sort of hold this role and this space in the community that's quite unique with regards to the other providers in town. Just a quick reminder, with those Medicaid dollars, we provide both youth and adult crisis services, where we're doing assessments like suicide assessments, referral to hospital, and respite care and counseling services. Our counseling services in the department range from briefer outpatient services all the way to mental health medication supports. We have highly intensive and specialized services, and provide an array of evidence-based practices. And when I talk about evidence-based practices, I'm meaning those treatment responses that show promising and repeated improvement for individuals. They're highly specialized, highly intensive, and expensive to provide because of the intensive array of services that come with them. So within those evidence-based practices, we have ACT, a sort of community treatment, and that services to help individuals who have significant mental health challenges, who have a history of repeated hospitalization, state hospitalization, homelessness, incarceration, that's driven by their mental health condition. We provide wraparound services. You all have heard from us for many years about the importance and the value of wraparound services, and that's an intensive, team-based service where youth and family get to think about their hopes and dreams, rather than being a mental health patient for the rest of their lives. And it's a really profound, different experience for families to think about, even in the middle of this crisis or this major event in my life, that we can help them carry the sense of hope and recovery. I'd say the same is true for ESA, Early Assessment and Support Alliance, and that's for individuals who have a severe mental illness. We also provide supportive employment and supportive education services, again, with a framework and a hope that people can and do recover and manage a significant mental illness, can be successful and work in employment. So I thought it was helpful to give, to remind you about the critical services that we're providing at the Health Department. What this contract does, it's unique this year for us, and it provides some shared accountability for both us and the Behavioral Care Network with regard to our contract. So what this, the change in this contract is we encounter or bill for our services, and then there'll be a reconciliation with the BCN. If we serve more than a hundred percent of our capacity within the program, we'll get reimbursed for those additional services. Right now, we have a flat contract, and regardless of whether we over or underserve, over or underperform our contract, the dollars are flat. So this allows for some shared accountability with both the BCN us, to ensure that we're serving people, and create some access in this community.
Very good. So this is, in some ways, an extension, an amendment to the original contract-
That's correct.
-that we did several years ago. And then the other question I have with, I was trying to make sense of the coding language, so are we still, is there still an acceptance or an agreement for the high-fidelity services that we use the alternative payment methodology? Are they asking us to go back to encountering every little thing that we can figure out?
So those services that are mostly highlighting those evidence-based practices are part of our APM, and the APMs will continue?
Great, okay.
Yeah.
Because that would make it really difficult for us to be within that risk corridor if we didn't have that alternative payment methodology.
And it underscores the value of the service, and that we need to be compensated in order to provide that high-valued service.
And then I'm assuming adult behavioral health is coded just like a fee-for-service kind of a service, so that's not an issue. And kind of, the crisis services, I know that's been kind of an area still of conversation. Anything new on that in terms of the coding?
Yeah, with the support of the BCN Council, Executive Council, the Board, we are in conversation with the BCN now to consider alternate payment for our crisis services, for both the adult and the children's crisis service. As you know, that crisis service is new, the kids' crisis service, and ensuring that we've got funding from the BCN and our community partners continue that going forward. So we're looking at that. We have been on a fee-for-service with the crisis system, and we have a framework within our APMs that we did, and in this changing landscape with our CCO, and what we're, the conversations we'll have over the next year will be to ensure that, the commitment from the BCN is that we get a additional contract for our crisis services before the end of the year, so we're still in conversation with them about that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm ready to make a motion if I may. I'd move that we do approve Amendment Number Three to the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network Mental Health Provider Service Agreement, modifying payment terms to monthly payments, adding twelve million seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars, and extending the term through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
I will second the motion. So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Just want to say, this is kind of early compared to what I thought it would be, so I'm really happy that we've been able to negotiate this, and it sounds like it's a good, good negotiation.
We're moving forward. The relationship with the BCN is very positive.
That's great. So all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it is approved? Thank you. Last item under Health is to consider approval of Amendment Number Four to the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network Mental Health Provider Service Agreement, authorizing the county to receive a one-time dispersment of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents for CCO, Coordinated Care Organization, incentive metrics. And Carrie, back to you.
So finally, Amendment Four recognizes the Health and Human Services Department's role in achieving performance metrics with our coordinated care organization, Willamette Valley Community Health. The CCOs, when they were, stood up more than five years ago, part of the plan was to incentivize programs to achieve outcomes. So in, in that framework, there are more than, there are twenty-three incentive metrics for the CCO to work at achieving. Two of those twenty-three are for, specific to mental health. So this amendment recognizes the, our role in achieving those two mental health metrics. The first one is a DHS assessment, and what that is, is when children enter foster care, the metric requires us as the Health Department, the mental health service provider, to do an assessment within sixty days of their placement in foster care. It's critically important, and as you might imagine, the potential trauma related to being removed from your biological parents or your current home into foster care is quite traumatic. So the assessment allows us to evaluate which children need further care, and that wraparound service program that I was talking about earlier really was stood up to help respond to the needs of children in foster care. So I'm very proud of our accomplishment here. And then the second one is for individuals who have been in the hospital, the psychiatric hospital, or a medical unit, who have a significant mental health condition. The requirement of the metric here is to ensure that people go from that inpatient medical or medical hospital stay into services within seven days. So Health and Human Services developed an in-reach program by where we're providing staff to go into the hospital, meet individuals. Many of those staff are peers who have shared lived experience with psychiatric conditions, and help them feel, have a trusted person that can help them walk out of the hospital into treatment services in the community. It's very disruptive to leave your home community, go into the hospital, and come home, and it's a big step for people to be in a sort of an artificial environment where they're trying to manage their mental health condition to come out into the community without support. So individuals who get follow-up care within seven days are less likely to return to another psychiatric admission. So again, I'm very proud of this work, and wanted to recognize our role and our intentional in-reach services here to the hospital. I think it's been very effective. So with that-
And I think the follow-up after hospitalization, that was one in prior years that we struggled to achieve, right? So this is really a big deal, that we were able to-
Yeah.
-achieve it.
It is a big deal. When somebody goes to the hospital, if they're in our local community, we have those relationships and that care coordination that works really, really well. This metric doesn't define it as a local hospital, it's any hospital, which could mean Portland, it could mean Colorado, and so, but we were held to this seven-day requirement for all hospitalizations. So it means being a really well-organized and coordinated effort to ensure that we reach this. So there was some question that this metric was gonna come off the list, but a recent conversation, they're gonna put it back on the list. So I think really recognizing the importance of that support as people are leaving the hospital.
Excellent. And then just out of curiosity, is this the formula discussion that we had at the Behavioral Care Network meeting about how those incentive metrics got divided amongst the various partners?
Yes.
So, all right, well, very good. I think that decision reflects appropriately the contribution that Marion County makes to the whole, so.
And thank you for your support on that.
Sure. All right, any discussion?
So Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we approve Amendment Number Four to the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network Mental Health Provider Service Agreement, authorizing county to receive a one-time dispersment of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-six seventy-five for CCO incentive metrics.
I will second the motion. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
It's approved?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before you get to the next one, looking ahead, I'm a little confused. It looks like we approved this already under consent. It shows up on the computer as a reconvenance on our next agenda item, but not on a written copy.
Right, we asked to move that to consent when we had the discussion at Management Department.
I just want to make sure it was the same, but it looks like it is, so.
Right, I don't see it, oh, you're right. Yeah, that got moved to consent, so it probably just didn't get moved on the web agenda, but it's moved on the printed agenda, right?
Yes.
And it is for the ID property, and just to explain-
Right.
-was, all the, all the conditions have been met, and they're trying to sell it and to take it off the deed, and it looked like we were all in agreement to do that, so.
Right, yeah, number four got moved to consent prior to the twenty-four-hour notice requirement, so I guess, I think it's just left over here that it didn't get switched on the web.
It kept showing up, and I couldn't figure out where we were.
Yeah, right.
Something's wrong.
So on the printed agenda that I have here, number four is consider adoption of an ordinance concurring in City of Donald Urban Growth Boundary Amendment. So Brandon Reich is here to explain this item.
All right. Good morning Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. On June twelfth this year, the City of Donald City Council approved an ordinance amending the city's urban growth boundary to add seventy-six point seven acres for residential land and ten point nine acres for public land needs. The city requested the county concur in the UGB amendment, and the county initiated the process to consider the amendments on August first this year, and held a hearing on September fifth. After receiving testimony, the board closed the hearing, approved the matter, and directed staff to return with an ordinance reflecting its decision. Before the board today is an ordinance that concurs in the City of Donald, conference of plan Urban Growth Boundary Amendment by approving amendments to the Marion County Comprehensive Plan by adopting the amendments of the Cities of Donald Urban Growth Boundary of eighty-seven- of eighty-seven point six acres for residential and public land needs. The ordinance further redesignates properties newly added to the UGB from a Marion County Comprehensive Plan Rural Designation of Primary Agriculture to a City of Donald Comprehensive Plan Designations of Residential and Public, and approves the rezoning of the properties from Marion County Rural Zone Designation of Exclusive Farm Use to Marion County Urban Zone Designations of Urban Transition Twenty-Acre and Public. So these would apply on the property once it's in the urban growth boundary, but before the land is annexed into the city. So with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
I don't have, excuse me-
Oh, no, go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I've just been happy to participate in this, it just, everybody, all different parties, some you wouldn't expect have been in agreement, and for the goal of trying to find worker housing where it's needed, where it's located right, and to promote the City of Donald itself, I'm just happy to be able to move it along. It is an administrative ordinance, we're not talking about any emergency clause, anything like that, okay?
And I will just add, this is probably the smoothest, least controversial urban growth boundary expansion I have ever been involved in in my sixteen years as a Commissioner, and I think there's, as we established in the hearings, and as Donald established in their evidence that they brought forward, there's certainly good reason to do this. They've made the case in terms of the housing needs that they have for the workforce housing for people that want to work up in that North County area and can't find anywhere to live, so appreciate all of the good work that they did, and I also appreciate you, Brandon, as planning staff, and the state folks for kind of helping us move through this more streamlined process. We certainly feel a lot less pressure, I think, than we did on some of the other issues that we've tried to deal with, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, but I don't have any questions. We've already gone through a public hearing, we've had, we've done the ordinance, right? We're doing the ordinance today-
Last week, you scheduled adoption.
We've had the information that Donald did when they did their own hearings, it's been a thoroughly vetted process. There we go. So the motion then, and you said you're not, we're not adopting it by emergency? Okay.
No, last week you scheduled adoption of the ordinance, for this week, and this week you can choose to adopt-
Okay.
-the ordinance.
And so, but it goes into effect immediately?
It does.
It doesn't take like nine weeks or a year or something like that, or I had to go into...
So Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we do adopt an ordinance that concurs in the City of Donald Urban Growth Boundary Amendment.
Okay, and I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved.
Thank you.
All right, end of the very long process. Thank you. All right, so that concludes our business for today, Wednesday, September nineteenth. We're just concluding our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. Tomorrow, Thursday, September twentieth, at eight AM is our City of Salem Marion County Meeting at the Sassy Onion, twelve forty-fourth State Street in Salem. At noon is the Liberty House Champions for Children Luncheon at the Salem Convention Center. Thursday, still, September twentieth at three o'clock is the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Steering Committee Meeting that will be held over in Conference Room A at the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments, one hundred High Street Southeast in Salem. And then on, still on September twentieth, Thursday at six thirty, is a Dimminus Legal Clinic Celebration held at the Salem Convention Center, two hundred Commercial Street Southeast in Salem.
For what?
It's for the legal clinic.
Oh, okay.
Then on September twenty-fourth, on Monday at eight thirty, is our calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, here at Courthouse Square, followed at nine by a management update. Then at eleven, there'll be a Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer Meeting, an executive session if needed. Then on, also on Monday, September twenty-fourth at one o'clock, is the Marion County Public Safety Coordinated Council Planning Meeting. Tuesday, September twenty-fifth at eight thirty, is Community Corrections Board in the Silverton Conference Room, followed at ten thirty by an executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two six sixty-two D. Jane, what is the two D? Do you remember?
I believe that's labor.
Labor negotiations. And then next Wednesday, September twenty-sixth at nine AM, we'll be back here in the Senator Hearing Room for our regular Wednesday board session. So while you're signing, tell us about this sue and settle thing that you were talking about, that you sent more information on, so people listening know what that's about.
Well, it's been something that I've, you've heard me talk about. Apparently, both state, federal, local, there's lawsuits, the, I almost think they're friendly lawsuits, encouraged by the agency. The agency settles out of court, and the complaining body gets a bunch of money. Well, there's been in the Interior Department something like four point four billion dollars of out-of-court settlements, putting new restrictions on citizens, not to mention the money, and these environmental groups are using this, they're flush with cash, to go after conservative candidates around the country. Not very happy about it.
So what, so what, is this a...
Oh, yes, I didn't finish. So the notice from Secretary Zink in the Interior Department is there'll be no more out-of-court settlements, so hopefully, that makes them go through the process and give a legitimate airing of what the issues are, and be transparent to the public of what and why payments are made. So I think it's going to be better. But those are serious things, they have two unserious things. Can you talk about them yet?
Unserious is good, yes.
Okay, good. So my wife Tammy is making, she was supposed to go next week, but she's making a mad dash flight to Boston for my fourth grandchild, who, it's kind of a bad situation. Ricky works in Boston, out of, it's about an hour away, so the plan was Tammy to be there to help get Ashley to the hospital and take care of my granddaughter Quinn, a two-year-old. So I've been, if I kept looking at my phone today, it was pretty legitimate, that I was hoping she makes it there in time to accomplish something. But while I was looking, I got, I got a strange message. Today Congressman Schrader was supposed to be the speaker at our State and Rotary Club.
Wow.
Yeah, and I was going to go see if there's anything new on the dam or other things that he's working on, and apparently he can't come, so the message was what I fill in for.
Ooh.
Yeah, but what a poor substitute they get. I have nothing. I got to make something up on the way to State and it'd be of interest. I guess I'd talk about the dam, and we'll talk about this timber things a little bit, and the monument. I don't know what else. So anyway, sorry for them, they were going to get a real presentation, instead they get me. I don't know how to explain it.
You know, locals good, too.
I got to think of something fast. You, I'm saying this because you're supposed to blend right in and say, well, why don't you, for example?
Well, I'm trying to think of, why don't you talk about solid waste? Are you good at that?
Yeah, I guess, talk about what you used to know.
We just had a work session on that this week.
I know. You know, I think I've occurred on solid waste. I've been out of the business for twenty years. I can't believe that, so, so don't use me-
It's kind of like me teaching French.
Yeah, do you, can you still do it?
Well, you know, there's a woman in my church congregation that is from France, and I want to speak to her, but I'm scared to, because the last time I taught French was nineteen eighty-nine, so like ninety-eight, two thousand, thirty years ago, essentially.
It's like riding a bike, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, no, when we went to France in twenty-eleven, it took about two days, but things started kind of coming back, but not, I mean, not fluent back, but I could-
But the point's valid.
I could stumble through.
If you don't use it, you lose it.
Yeah, you do. You really do.
Anyway, so pity the poor Rotarians in State for what they're going to face in an hour.
Oh, sorry. You'll do fine.
For them.
You'll do fine, you're always entertaining.
All right.
Trying to think if there's anything else going on that we should be talking about. Working on, well, I might mention, we're working on the giving people a second chance breakfast. Poor Christie has been up to her eyeballs in-
And now United Way, I hear.
Registration, right? But there are still some seats left, so want to make sure that anyone that's listening, if you want to just give us a call at the board office or send us an email, we can send you the link to Eventbrite and get you signed up so that you can be there. We have room for four hundred this year, so.
We have a, we have a special visitor.
We have seventy seats left. Chad, did you want to say anything before we adjourn?
You need to come up, and we want you to. This works out good for me, because I, he has an event tomorrow. Is it tomorrow? I'm not going to be here anyway.
At Magoo's.
And it wasn't for lack of-
I'm coming after a meeting at five. You still going to be there at five?
If you come at five, I will be there.
All right, well, no, if you don't wait for me, you would-
I won't be, but I'm conflicted. I would love to be, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I appreciate that, and actually, great chances, you said Chad Freeman from Sedcor. As we mentioned, I will be leaving Sedcor at the end of this week. Somehow that is remarkably, that that happened, but I also, and wanted to start, actually, just as a kind of reason I stopped by, was to say thank you for the great support that the county has been for both me personally, but also Sedcor and economic development. I think you guys are a true, true partner, it's been awesome to see, and a real honor to be able to work for six years. I have no idea how six years has come and gone. I was thinking as we're making this transition, I started when I was, I'd been married for two months, and now we're putting kids on school buses this morning, and it seems like a lifetime has passed, and we've been able to go through that together. So it's, it's been a lot of fun and, and really cool. So thank you for your support here, and then kind of next steps, too, at Sedcor, we're going through the process of recruitment. We finalized, I think, at the last round of interviews, or maybe the next-to-last round of interviews, we got two great candidates. Marion County's been a big part of that process, and think that, optimistic that we'll have somebody in there even the first part of November, so that that, it seems like a very good, quick process, and one that we're, I'm hopeful at this point that it will be almost a seamless transition, and then of course, we've got just a great team that we've got there that's, I've struggled to keep up with, so they'll probably move faster when I'm not there anyways, but.
And you won't be far, right?
I won't be far.
And Henningson Coal Storage is, like, they're a Sedcor member, right? So you're going to be active, you're just going to be on the other side of the fence. You're going to be contributing like what your business needs as opposed to facilitating what all the businesses need.
Absolutely, and as I said, I'll be working with Henningson, and I'll be in their headquarters, which will be the Portland office, but doing a lot of work here, both in the Salem area proper, Mid Willamette Valley, but definitely Valley and region-wide, so we've got a lot of projects here, and like I said, just other side of the fence, still, it's been interesting content, I want to still be involved, it's an organization I believe a ton with, I believe in a ton, but also don't want to be seen as looking over anybody's shoulders running. I'm sure both, both of the candidates we have are awesome, and I'm honored that we have that kind of talent interested in, in moving forward with helping our organization grow and helping our communities continue to grow, so.
That's great.
It's a really exciting time.
Well, thanks for stopping by.
Thank you, thanks for the chance.
Look forward to, I've never been in Magoo's, ever.
Me either.
They got Budweisers with little limes.
Right, yeah, I'm not having a Budweiser.
And what do you do with those?
I don't know. Chad, this is a bad day for me, getting to say goodbye to people who've been special to me with Walt Beglin, now you, but I've enjoyed working with you. But I had a brilliant idea. Are you available for lunch? They're looking for a speaker in State and for the Rotary Club. Yeah, you'd be a lot more interesting.
Nobody has ever said I'm more interesting than you. You always bring local color and stories that I just can't bring. So, but no, and I do have a lunch date today, I apologize.
Fine, just a thought.
You're on your own.
That's a great, nice try, though, that was awesome.
Okay, well, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for stepping up to the microphone, too.
Oh, thank you.
All right, well, I think we will adjourn at this point, because I got to get going to a thing.